Okay, it looks like we have Walt now.
Gracious. Good evening, everyone. My apologies. Everything crashed on me and I just got in.
Well, I think we'll go ahead and get started then. Good afternoon and welcome to the March 21st Planning Commission meeting for the city of Manzanita, and it looks like we have a quorum. The commission chair, Karen Yurka, is excused from today's meeting, and in her absence, I'll be chairing the meeting. Before we start, I'd like to have introductions from the audience, the attendees. Just very short, a name, where you live, and the reason for attending today. So I'm going to start with, I'm just going to go down the list in order here. Troy Bowers.
Troy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hey, sorry, I've got audio problems tonight, but I'm at 605 Ridge Road. We've had the house there for going on nine years, and I just wanted to make a few comments regarding the planned unit development.
Troy?
Complex.
Troy, we're just doing introductions right now?
Yeah, I thought that's what people wanted was that little short snippet.
No, just audience introductions. We'll open it up a little bit later for comments.
Sure.
A.J. Ariola.
A.J. Ariola here.
Okay. Are you a Manzanita resident?
She's muted again, Lee.
Okay, Ben Rosenberg.
Resident of Manzanita.
They didn't hear us.
Hi, Kim Rosenberg, resident of Manzanita and my lovely husband Ben.
Ben.
Thank you. Bill Gumpenberger.
Bill, you should be unmuted. Yeah, I'm still not hearing you, Bill. Go ahead and try again. And I'm not getting anything from Bill, Lee.
Okay, let's go to Bob Joseph.
You should be unmuted, Bob. Be able to unmute yourself. And Bob, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
I think I just did. I am not a Manzanita resident. I'm a resident of Nia County.
Thank you, Bob. Denise Loffman.
And Denise, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, my name's Denise Loffman. I am here on behalf of my mom and brother and I. We have a place at 663 Dorcas Lane.
Thank you. Don Hanson.
I didn't say your address.
Okay, Don.
Yeah, Don Hanson. My wife and I have a house on South Third, 200 South Third on Manzanita.
Thank you. Eric Hansen.
I'm not muted. Hey, I, yeah, I am also a resident of Manzanita, live at the corner of Classic Street and Dorcas.
Thank you. Gerald Weiniger.
Unmuted. There we go. Yeah, Gerald Weiniger. I live on Portland in Manzanita.
Thank you.
Say that again, Lee, sorry.
Janet Carter.
Janet Carter. I live at 372 Jackson Way.
Great, thank you. Jim Pitts.
Jim here. I live at Classic Street cottages.
Thanks, Jim. And Joe.
Hi, I'm Joe Newhouse. I am a resident of Pine Ridge and a homeowner in Manzanita.
Thanks, Joe. Leela Salmon.
I'm Leela Salmon. I'm, my reason for being here is I'm just a gadfly. I live on Ridge Road in Manzanita.
Thank you, Leela. And I don't know who Manzanita Stream is.
That's IT.
Okay. Mark Adderidge.
Hi, Mark Adderidge, home at 547 Ridge, Ridge Drive.
Thank you. And Mary Reef.
I'm Mary Reef, and I live across the street in Classic Street cottages. I am on the front of Classic Street cottages, so look directly down on this new development.
Thank you. Rindy.
Yeah, we might on other shoes. Yeah, Rindy, you should be unmuted or be able to unmute yourself. I'm not getting anything, Lee.
Okay, let's go on to Sandy.
Sandy, Arch Cape, have a lot on the golf course. Empty lot.
Thank you, Sandy. And Yvonne?
And I live in Classic Street cottages.
Okay, great. If there's anybody that I didn't get who would like to be acknowledged, please speak up. Okay. We had some minutes for the February 22nd Planning Commission meeting. I'm assuming that all the commissioners had an opportunity to review those. Is there anyone who have any comments or any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'm going to assume that they were all properly maintained. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Thanks, Phil. Second.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved in second hand to approve the minutes from the February 22nd Planning Commission meeting. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, minutes pass unanimously. The easiest part of the agenda. So just to be clear, there were two applications for this afternoon's agenda. However, the application for the variance was withdrawn by the applicant. So we currently just have the one application for the planned unit development. On today's agenda is a public hearing on a land use application to be heard by the planning commission. I want to point out that members of the planning commissioner appointed by the council and serve as volunteers. Our role is to conduct public hearings and make decisions about land use matters in the city of Manzanita. First, I'll explain the order the commission will follow to conduct the hearing. The chair will open the hearing. The applicant will present an overview of the proposed development. Staff report will be presented with allowances for questions from the commission. General questions or comments will be heard, if any, regarding the proposed action or criteria. The applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to points raised. The chair will then close the public portion of the hearing. And the commission will formulate findings and determine whether the requirements of the zoning ordinance have been met. The commission is interested in hearing all issues associated with the proposal. However, if I see a speaker repeating what has been said by previous speakers, I will interrupt and ask the speaker to identify any new issues that have not already been raised. If you simply want to be on record as concurring with a previous speaker, please indicate this and end your testimony. In the interest of keeping the hearing focused on issues, I'll limit each speaker to three minutes of testimony. The applicant and/or the applicant's representative may have up to 15 minutes to present the application. So again, the application to be considered today is a planned unit development to construct a hotel complex near the intersection of Dorcas Lane and Classic Street. The property is ZONE SRR, or Special Residential Recreational Zone. Before we start, I need to ask some procedural questions for the record. Are there any members of the commission who must announce any actual or potential conflict of interest bias or ex parte contact? This includes any site visits. Phil?
Or conflict of interest bias or ex parte contact, and I have visited the site.
Thank you. Steve?
As I visit a site many times, I have no conflict, no bias, and no ex parte contact.
John? No bias, no ex parte contact, visited the site many times. Bert?
I have no bias, no ex parte contact, and no conflict of interest, and I have visited the site.
Okay, like those before me, I have no bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte contact, and have walked by the site several times. Member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any member of the commission to hear this matter by a reason?
Excuse me, I, I think you forgot Gina.
Jenna.
Hi.
Sorry, Jenna.
Well, thank you. Forgive me.
I have had no ex parte contact or conflict of interest. I have no bias, and I have visited the site many times.
Thank you for your patience. As I started to say a moment ago, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any member of the commission to hear this matter by reason of actual or potential conflict of interest bias or ex parte contact?
I do not see any hands, Lee.
Thank you, Scott. Vito Sorrelli, would you please give an overview of this proposed development to the commission?
And Vito, you should be able to share your screen and?
Is that up now, or?
Perfect, there we go.
Perfect. So I'm Vito Sorrelli and live in Arch Cape, Oregon. I'll walk you through the deck, the slides that were submitted with the application. So as, as previously discussed, this is a planned unit development for a hotel with varying types of rooms situated on the, on the east side of the golf course at the corner of Dorcas and Classic Street. The project consists of 19 units at the north end of the site that would be similar in design and style to the image located here at the top of the left, followed by a number of cabins down at the lower section of the site, the middle section of the site that I'll show in site plan, as well as some micro cabins at the, at the very end at the south side of the site. So six of the micro cabins at the, at the far end. The plan is to develop this in phases. It would, it would consist of the 19 at the front, the nine cabins in the middle, and the six at the very end. Next slide shows the, the site location and macro site parameters, which this is the corner of Dorcas and Classics. So I've highlighted some of the key areas in the, in the surrounding neighborhood. So Coast cabins located about a block to the north, the San Noon Hotel, that's a couple blocks to the west, the recently approved and developed Classic Street cottages to the east, and then this is the subject site. So it comes from the corner of Dorcas down Classic and then ends down here at the, at the south side of the, of the golf course. This side represents the existing conditions. It's noted here with the, the site, the site streets and property boundaries, but more so just to show the topography. So with the Classic Street cottages to the east, they sit, you know, plus or minus 30 feet below the subject property. So most of the proposed concept sits lower at the golf course elevation, then there's the street, and then the Classic Street cottages to the east. This, this plan represents the, the site plan, and I'm going to go to the next. It's a little bit more easy to follow. So the intersection, I've had a number of meetings with the fire department, the city manager, building officials, and Public Works on, on the access to the site. Classic Street with its great elevation and its current, the current plating and zoning, the, it was recommended to have the access into this site by a private drive located to the far west of, of the property along Dorcas. So the entry to the site would be here along Dorcas, which would have parking at the top, and then the driveway would wind down to multiple parking spaces for the units, as well as, as this phases out into the, the lower cabins at the south in, into the site. So entry on the north with the parking a lot buffered and screened along the east and the north here, and then dropping down into the series of the hotel units, the community center, as well as the nine cabins, and then the six units at the bottom. And this would be the fire turnaround per code and, and review with the fire department. I've outlined some initial design elements, just showing that there'd be minimal downlighting. So this represents that there'd be minimal lighting and vegetation to buffer the surrounding communities. This is representation of the downlights that would be on the building, and then low landscape lighting. So just early thinking about through the site design and how this can tie into the landscape and, and the existing conditions of the site. So a lot of the trees along the west side would be maintained with this development, add some more buffer along the east, and then not shown, which is off the site and into the golf course property, is a lot of the vegetation and trees that you would see that I can pull up on a city map, but most of the trees and vegetation are actually off the property. This slide represents the parking. So in total, I can go through this if there's questions, but there's overall, the site per the calculations of the, of the code would be required to have 43 parking spaces on site, and this current plan has 60 plus, plus 60 parking spaces. So right now, I'm, I feel like the parking is, is something that I was able to, to fit in the site, but still keep a lot of the natural vegetation and, and keep a low percentage of, of development on the, on the property. So a low certain lock coverage. This side represents, so the, the plan is to do this in phases. So the first phase being the north of the site and the, the hotel, the two-story units on the north side, as well as the entire road and infrastructure to the property. The second phase outlined here would be the nine, the nine cabins that would be platted, platted similar to residential scale. So with plus or minus 16 feet in between, almost mimicking back to this state park feel where there's cabins intertwined with, with properties. And then the third, the third phase would be the cabins at the very end. So this would be at the very end, south end of the development, where the hillside and topography ramps back up to the elevation of Classic Street. And so these would sit down at the very end of the site in the lower section. And then overall, I just added a couple model rendering showing kind of the rough idea of how this, this concept would fit the site. There's some views that show that based on the elevations, most of, besides this northwest or northeast corner, most of the cabins and roof lines sit actually below the, the road elevation. So I have some more graphics that I can pull up, but the overall development is, is, is down below the elevation of the road. But yeah, that's kind of a quick rundown of, of, of the general intent. So again, going back to this main image, this is the look and feel. So trying to really tie into the fabric of, of Manzanita, this is a project that I did in Arch Cape within, it's in a commercial zone located in close proximity to residential communities. So really trying to keep the look and feel and thread of, of the surrounding properties and development. And, and as this, and as this further gets evolved and developed, I'm really trying to buffer this into the landscape. So these are the trees I mentioned on the golf course that would be on the actual facility of the golf course's tax lot, and then adding some more vegetation, natural buffers to really create like a state park feel of, of cabins situated down on the, on the street. Similar to, I think, what they've done really successfully is Coast cabins where they've tucked their six-state cabins in on Lenita, and they're very private due, due to the landscaping and buffering. So overall, that's, that's, that's my, you know, quick run-through of, of the project and the phasing and general design.
Thank you, Vito, and I'm sure there'll be some questions for you later, but I want to give staff an opportunity to present their report. So Walt, you're up.
Thank you, Lee. Good evening, everyone. As you know, this is an application for a planned unit development. It's on 3.81 acres of special residential recreation zone property. I won't go through the outline again. The applicant has represented how the layout would occur. Section 303 to H permits hotels, motels, including an eating and drinking establishment therewith in the special residential recreation zone. In addition, the provisions in the zone require the planning commission to use the planned unit development process in which to evaluate the application. This is a little bit unusual in that the application in review are only considering the planned development layout and not the individual buildings. While the applicant submitted photos and schematics identifying potential designs, there is no design review application as part of this planned development. However, the layout does contain proposed building locations, and if approved, the commission has the authority certainly to condition their decision on the final layout substantially conforming to the proposal, including relative size, position, and design of the structures. Again, we're simply looking at a potential layout and whether or not this layout meets the planned development requirements. There will be additional, if approved, there will be additional hearings to review the specific design and development issues of each phase. Couple of items, just to clarify, if you look at the city's website, it shows a street running through this property, conferring with Public Works. That is not the case. County assessor maps clearly show there are two tax lots here. Phase two, if you look at the proposal, submitted a plan that, that includes possible property lines. These were, these were dashed lines that were part of the layout. I want to know that this was just something the applicant considered. I want to emphasize again, there is no partition, land division under consideration here. It's simply looking at the planned development for a commercial use. Now, the specific planned development requirements are found in section 1.36 of the development ordinance, and just simply note that this again is a little bit unusual. It is a commercial project, not a residential, but we are required to use the planned development provisions in the code. I'll simply note that regarding standards and requirements, the allowed uses, as I noted, are permitted within the zone. There is no issue with regard to clustering development, because this is not a residential project, and there is a provision that the city may require bonding. And just for the record, that is something the city may require, and usually does when it comes to public facility improvements. Under the next section, it says, it talks about the actual planned development procedure. Now, the applicant did submit the copies that are required, and also these companies, copies were distributed to the commission and were made available to the public. So those provisions are in compliance. When it comes to looking at the layout, the planning commission must consider a number of items. First one, that there are special conditions or objectives which satisfy a departure from standard ordinance requirements. This would usually come into focus if we're looking at residential development. But again, this is a commercial project. There is no request to modify standards, the underlying standards of the zone, and also requirements. The second item is that the development will not be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. In this particular case, the ordinance 95-4 implements the plan. And in this particular location and zone, a mixture of residential and limited commercial developments are considered allowed uses. And again, what they're proposing is an allowed use. So therefore, this certainly implements the plan. Now, the area surrounding the development may be planned to be in substantial harmony. I think the applicant addressed that with regard to the sort of forested or woodlot area along the golf course, and also the fact that the topography of this project places a number of the buildings below the general site level of the adjacent residential uses. Again, the use is allowed within the zone, and it looks like it can potentially certainly be compatible, and that can also be honed in on when, again, if approved, the planning commission looks at the design review requirements. The fourth item is that this can be completed in a reasonable period of time. This project will be developed in phases. The commission has the authority to set standards for that. Also, the streets are adequate to support. We have no particular street standard for a commercial development such as this, certainly recommending that the commission look at at least a 22-foot wide roadway through there, but as the applicant noted, the particular point of access was approved by Public Works. Finally, where you look at utility and drainage issues, as this project develops, engineering plans will need to be submitted and approved before construction can begin. Finally, we get into some minutia here. Planning commission is supposed to let the applicant know of their decision. It's part of what we're reviewing this evening. There are other provisional requirements, talking about making sure the city map has a planned development stamp on it or notification that the property does contain a planned development, and that's something the city is required to do. Finally, building permits on a planned development may only be issued on the basis of the approved plan. Again, at this juncture, we're just looking at the layout, the concept. Subsequent design review will be necessary to look at individual buildings. And at that juncture, the buildings have to fit in with the concept plan, and the details on those buildings will be reviewed at that time. Now, the development standards in the SRR is Now, the development standards in the SRR zone. Couple of interesting things here. The first item talks about dwelling density. It's 6.5 dwelling units an acre. Again, this is for residential development. This is a commercial project, therefore does not apply. Interestingly enough, the project needs to conform with the R3 zone requirements. And I will review those a little bit later in the staff report. The planning commission. Okay, here we go. The planning commission will use the procedures set forth in this section to review this application. Again, that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. The SRR zone has a maximum lot coverage of 40% for planned development. Oh, note for the record that the applicant estimated the lot coverage at about 33%, certainly fitting in with that. And requirements for the R3 zone are found in section 3 0203. And it's interesting, there is no minimum lot size for a commercial development. The minimum lot size for residential is 5,000 square feet and certainly at 3.8 acres. This certainly exceeds that requirement. The minimum width anywhere along the line is 60 feet, which exceeds the minimum 40 foot requirement. There's a lot depth here of over 1,100 feet with the minimum depth at 90. And also, the minimum frontage, front yard shall be 20 feet. Based on this middle, it looks like it'll be about 80 feet. I'll just note too that based on this middle and the side yard and rear yard requirements, this proposal either meets or exceeds those standards. And that also applies to the front yard setback as well. Finally, in the SRR zone, there is a standard of 55% lot coverage. And in this case, excuse me, in the R3 zone, 55% lot coverage. This proposal is only at 33, which also meets the planned unit development requirements as well. Now, finally note, there was a couple of provisions with regard to drainage, water tables, dry wells. All that would be addressed at the time, building plans. Well, I should say, engineering plans are submitted as well as building plans. I'd just like to note that under consideration this evening is a basic layout that establishes the framework for future development. This is simply driven in part by the fact that the zone requires the use of the planned development procedure, whether it's residential development or not. Based on the submitted material and the layout, the proposed use is allowed. And the buildings can meet or exceed all the setback requirements of the underlying zone and also application of the R or three zone. Compliance with some issues such as floor area ratios, building type, parking and so forth are reviewed when the individual design review applications are made for the individual structures or groups of buildings, as it were. This design review application must simply be consistent, though, with the application. I will also note, as these phases progress, details will emerge and also need to be addressed with things such as development on the dune, development within wetlands area, if they're so identified, and also addressing issues of traffic for this particular site. So as the actual development is not finalized, the location, level of public facilities cannot be done to any degree. But that we certainly recognize that engineering plans will be necessary as the project develops. This is a commercial project in three phases. There is nothing in the code that establishes timelines for such things. We certainly suggest that the first phase be started, have the details in the report within two years of the final decision on this case. And applicants for improvements for the remaining two phases be submitted within five years of the approval of the design review for phase one. Again, with that, I believe that for a conceptual layout, the applicant has shown the property can be developed within the concept of a planned development. There will further applications are necessary and will require a public hearing for the planning commission to look at the development of the individual phases. And with that, it's our recommendation, the request be approved, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Now, we have to answer any questions that the commission may have.
If no one has any questions currently for the staff, does any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Jenna?
I'm wondering, in your design mocks, what is the width of the roadway that you put in?
The roadway in the mockup is plus or minus 20 feet wide currently.
Okay, thank you.
I can't see everyone, so if you care to speak, just speak up. No other questions for the applicant? There's Bert and Steve. Go ahead, Bert.
Yeah, I have a question that's probably for the, well, I'm just going to ask it generally. The comprehensive plan has a lot of words in it regarding the use of the requirement for open space and usable open space in property developed in the SRR zone. And I have not did not see any mention of this in the staff report. And I'm wondering why that wasn't done? Because it's certainly clear in the comprehensive plan that it is expected.
Part of that is implemented to through the provision about maintaining a maximum coverage of 33%. No, excuse me, 40% within this project. The applicant has actually gone below that with 33%. So as the project evolves, or if you will, each phase is reviewed, those particular open spaces are looked at in greater detail. So the implementing language was certainly met.
I think that it's fairly clear that the comprehensive plan wants to see usable open space in planned developments in the SRR zone. There's there are parts of this development that are not don't do not have houses on them, but they have pavement. They have parking places and they have a very steep unusable embankment by the highway or by the road. Now, I there are no particular criteria as to how much usable open recreational space is required in the planned development. But it is something that the planning commission is told to evaluate and rule on. I frankly see very little in this plan usable recreational open space, recreational for things such as badminton or horseshoes or lawn games of that sort. So I think that that's something that the planning commission should give some guidance to the developer so that they're have this in mind as they proceed here. I think that there's no there are no numbers given in the application that I have run across that suggests that there that there is usable recreational open space of any amount at all. They're just little scraps of it between cabins, between units and between the cabin or the units and the driveway. So I would, at this point, say that the application is deficient in this area. And I'd like to see if if there are any other members of the planning commission that have that those the same feelings.
Thank you, Bert. Any comments on that from anybody else in the commission? I think that I'm going to suggest that, Bert, that the comprehensive plan in this area leaves a lot to our decision making as to what it really implies. Open space, usable open space. What what does that really mean? I'm not suggesting you're wrong. I'm suggesting that the cop cop plan is short of definitive language in that regard.
Well, I agree. There is no definitive language, no percentage of how much land should be devoted to these things. But and I don't think don't know that there has been a planned development that the planning commission has worked on in the SRR zone or any for any basis of saying, well, this is what we did the last time. I think this is the first.
Am I allowed to speak to that or answer some of those questions?
Certainly.
Um, there, yeah. So I, again, there's not a specific quantity, I guess, of open space that has been established by the zoning, but I just want to reference a few areas just to clarify the intent. So the units at the north, which I mentioned, and then the residential more cabins to the middle, this would be a community area gathering with an outdoor patio, fire pits, and then just in scale, I think it's a little bit difficult with the scale of this drawing. But this is about a 50 by 100. So a typical Manzanita tax lot that's open area that would be for the community staying at the grounds. And then, again, I agree, these are each one between are 16 feet and those would be, I guess, less common area. I agree with that statement. But then at the end, there's this gathering at the back, which in relationship to scale, this is about, you know, 90 to 100 feet circle that, again, the topography from my survey ends, but this would be a gathering place at the back of the property as well with fire pits and lawn games and some of the other items that were mentioned in comment. So this center area, which would be a combination of of grass and greenscape, as well as a deck and patio with fire pits. And then this at the end would be a community gathering space as well.
How many square feet would be devoted to that?
Well, the one in the middle is, this would be over 5,000 square feet with the lot plus the deck. So this would be over 5,000 square feet. Probably more more, this would be kind of a typical lot size in Manzanita. Plus, this is a deck, but I still consider a deck and hardscaping patio to be common recreational area just in the northwest with the weather we have. And then, so let's say plus or minus 5,000 to 6,000 square feet here. And then an equal amount at the back in property as well. So this is just like the line of topography, but the property extends out. So another 4,000 to 5,000 square feet at the back.
So there's in excess of 10,000 square feet of this. In that.
Correct. I think that's where the scale of this map is just, it's difficult to show, but that would be a typical, you know, this would be a typical sized lot in Manzanita.
And this is, this is space that is contiguous contiguous and not scattered around between buildings?
I wouldn't, yeah, the, I'm not counting the, as you mentioned, I'm not counting the the property between the buildings nor, as you mentioned, too, which very valid is the the steepness of the hill on the back on the east side of the drive aisle. I'm only with that number just counting the the flat areas that would extend out to the golf course here along this community area, as well as at the very end, this back section that would be, you know, when when platted more of like a radius of of, you know, 4,000 square feet.
Does that eliminate some of your concerns, Bert?
It at least there appears that they're being addressed. It's for the number of number of units, it's I would say it's a rather modest amount of space for the number of people that would would be there.
And and with that, each unit, so the line where my cursor is, that would be, you know, so there's common area for everyone. And then each house residence or cabin stops here and each one would have, you know, 20, 20 to 30 feet of of common area outside to help mitigate those those questions.
Excuse me, Vito, if you thought you were sharing your screen, you're not.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was it was a it stopped sharing, but this this area right here, this common area around, so this is a deck patio fireplace, as well as this side parcel, that's about the size of a tax lot in Manzanita. And then this section down at the back of the property. I'm sorry, I I thought it was still sharing. I didn't realize it stopped.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I guess I would like to see those common areas or open space areas itemized on some some part of the plan and identified graphically on the drawings so that we can, if if we approve this plan, we could would also be approving the location and amount of of common area and open space.
I don't know when, yeah, I don't know when it would be addressed, but we're talking about open space and being outside and golf balls. Do we need to include at this point some sort of protection against everyone slices off of five?
I I think it's a little early for that, Jenna.
Okay.
I, you know, again, we need to focus on the overall use of the land and not the particulars associated with it.
But I've got a question, Lee, to the applicant. The, did I understand you to say that when figuring the percentage of open recreational area, that you excluded the bank along the east side of the road?
I did not count that bank in that in that common area. As I mean, it's 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 calculated in the percentage of development of the property, but not in the common areas, as you mentioned, for the our for the previous question about common recreational area. No, this is on, this would be landscaped and unusable for people on the on the on the site.
All right. And Walt, I think you had your hand up.
Part of one of the issues I'd like to just bring up here is based on state law, and this is why I get a little conservative, if you will, when it comes to looking at the comprehensive plan for a land use case. By state law, everything in your plan that you wish to implement must be within your code. So even though we have language that ties back to to the comprehensive plan, the only thing that we can really use to judge and 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 believe me, this is this is an issue with a lot of communities. The only thing we can really judge is what's currently in our code. And it talks about a limitation of open space. And I share Bert's concerns that we don't have any particular guidelines on what is acceptable for usable space that's now within the development code. Things like that. We don't have some, as the state would prefer, and I think most people would as well, including applicants, a clear as the state would prefer, and I think most people would as well, including applicants, a clear and objective standard in which in which to make a determination. So I I just want to note, I'm not sidestepping the issue. It's that we do have a little bit of a problem, if you will, looking at the plan for what's called basically a land use decision that's quasi judicial. So I hope it didn't muddy up the waters too much here, but I share Bert's concern. We're just a little hamstrung with with what the state allows us to use for our guidance.
That's some good clarification, Walt. I was not aware of that. It's it's helpful. Thank you. Steve, you've had your hand up a long time.
I did. Thank you. I have more of a comment. First of all, thank you, Vito, for your broad overview of what you're planning to do and what you'd like to do. I'd like to say that I've walked down that classic road many, many times, and I've often looked at that area and I thought, wow, that's a really a great place down there for building home sites and right next to the golf course or whatever. But you know, and I looked at that property, I never in my mind's eye ever thought it could be developed to this extent to be so ambitious. And I have to say that I studied the planned unit development. I found myself asking myself, how does this or does this development enhance livability of Manzanita and the residents? All of what's being proposed is allowed in the Ozonorian special residential recreation. It's within to do an overlay and also qualified for planned unit development procedures in section four point one three six. But I got to say, I think that just because something is legal doesn't necessarily make it right, proper, or the best thing to do for the community. We mentioned comprehensive plan several times, and I'd like to point out that in the introduction, the comp, it says simply, very simply, that the comp's plan's intent is to guide development in a way that's keeping with the desire to the majority of the citizens and the property owners. And the comp plan also says later on that through sound planning, the goal is to achieve conditions for living and recreation, which would be for the greatest value of the residence to the city, permanent and temporary residence. And again, someplace else that says Manzanita's primary asset is residential and character. And this is this is part that concerns me. See, we're a community of six hundred full-time residents, and we've always warmly welcomed people, visitors from all around the world. In our summer months, the population gets up and now year round, people come into Manzanita. They know the livability, they come, they want to enjoy it. And Vito, I can see by your proposal here, you're aware that the attraction of Manzanita. I might say that we do not want to be known as a recreational area only. Manzanita currently is experiencing unprecedented growth and development of home-built sites. And we have a persistent flow of short-term rentals, all of which is putting a strain on the quality of life and and community harmony. And frankly, many of our residents, permanent and temporary, are reaching a saturation point and are looking for some kind of controlled direction and development and planning. With this in mind, as I said earlier, just because something's legal doesn't make it right or proper, the best thing to do. And I personally do do believe that the proposed planned development unit presently being considered does not meet the intent of the cop plan. And therefore, it's in my opinion that it's not in the best interest of the city of Manzanita. It's six hundred permanent residents, as well as the enormous second homeowners. And for listening to some of the dialogue, it is my hope that this planned unit development proposal could be set aside for further conditions because it's further considerations.
Thank you, Steve. Walt, your, Bert, your hand's still up. Do you?
Yeah, we can take it down.
Okay. Phil, did you have anything to add?
I am constrained in asking the questions that I would really like to ask about this project because of the guidelines of this meeting. So I'll just have to wait.
Okay. So.
Do I answer that or do I talk about that question later?
You you're talking about Phil's?
The previous question about the short, the use and not.
Feel free. If you want to respond to Steve's.
Yeah, so I just want to follow up. I mean, I I agree that, you know, I live up in Clotsop County, and we're dealing with the same same concerns about short-term rentals more so than 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 zoning. There's limited commercial space and I agree with those same issues. And, you know, again, in this small community of Arch Cape where I live, as well as working in Cannon Beach and Manzanita and seeing and following all the hearings, you know, short-term rentals are an issue that needs to be reviewed and resolved. I think, I think going with the comprehensive plan, I I personally think that the short-term rentals that are embedded into the residential neighborhoods become more of the 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 issue than than using a property, in this case, an SRR zone, which has an outright use for hotel motel and amenities for for that area. So the the zoning has established this site as a space for recreational use and call it transient use, where I think a lot of the the community and the the person at the seams is is having that same hotel motel use embedded into the residential community. So I think I'm a big believer that the zones have been established and and should be responded to per their use and zoning. And I think that short-term rentals within the neighborhood and communities are something that are going to continually be reviewed and argued both ways. So in in fitting with the 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 mold and comprehensive plan of Manzanita, I think the the overall design and layout is has responded well to the landscaping and embedding itself into a natural setting. There are similar uses with coast cabins with the Sandun Inn, the density of cottage street classics on the east side. So I think though there's questions and concerns of short-term rentals, I just would not, I guess I don't see that the outright use of the SRR zone should be pulled into that category of review. And that's a different question and and I guess topic that that is going on within all the coast coast communities right now.
Well, I I think I understand what you're saying, Vito, but I think the concern most of the citizens have, but I think I'd like for you to consider that that the density and amount of people you're going to be bringing into the city, and they're all going to be temporary. The city is only six hundred people. And it puts a great strain on the community with with the constant influx of people coming and going. We don't know who who's coming and who's going. And so I I would like to see some consideration to that respect for the livability for those of us who live here.
Anybody else on the commission have any thoughts to either Steve's concerns or Vito's response? Okay.
Lee, I got a one thing I want to bring up, but if there's any response to that, I'll let somebody else go ahead.
You had something else you wanted to bring up, John?
Yeah, wetland, the wetland issue, we need to to discuss that. Is this the proper place in the meeting, or do we want to do that at the end of the meeting?
I actually had intended on bringing that up myself. So you want to go?
Uh, no, go ahead. I've got it.
Okay, Vito, the letter from the Department of State Lands dated January eighteenth, two thousand seventeen indicates that no wetlands or waterways were identified within the study area. It also states, please note that the study area includes only a portion of tax lot twenty-one hundred and to see the attached map. When I looked at that map, it wasn't definitive due to the scale. I think it's one inch equals five hundred feet. So the outline of that area that was studied is appears quite different than other maps that show waterways in that area or wetlands. So I would ask that you contact the Department of State Lands and either show written confirmation of the assertion that the two thousand seventeen study includes all of the area within the proposed development or ask the state to perform a new review on the property.
Yeah, I I did. I wa- I I work with the wetlands delineator delineator often, and and I will, I will provide that updated letter. I've walked the site with them. And there's, I think, some conflict with the report, but also with Tillman County has just recently adopted their GIS, I guess, web maps, and some of the overlays don't necessarily always transfer, but I will definitely provide the updated letter that that states that for the entire parcel.
Thank you, Vito. And John, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, the the concern I've got is when I look at that map, the red area is the area that was inspected for wetland determination. What I see is the most of the area for this planned development was not included in that. There's two lots, excuse me, two lots, a real long one, and then a smaller one at the north end of that. And both of those are excluded from the red area in that determination map. So my concern is it looks like that was not inspected.
Yeah, and I'll provide, I'll provide the the follow-up letter that with the the full analysis of both tax lots. Again, I talked to the wetlands delineator last week as well as today. And again, with web maps, it's not always consistent with where they classify wetlands versus in reality where they are. So I will, I will provide a follow-up to the the city with an updated map and statement on that regard.
That will be helpful, Vito. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? I've got a little bit more here, a couple more issues, concerns, Vito. I think, you know, the plan concept meets the criteria as outlined by by staff. But they've, the plans presented really, and you even alluded to this, they failed to adequately describe the details within the planned unit development due to the scale. And these could probably, they'll they'll be addressed on future plans, I'm sure. More importantly, I have really serious concerns regarding the vehicular traffic impact at the entrance exit. The cop cop plan discourages development that overload street. And I just heard from from staff, from Walt, that, you know, we can't we can't really enforce something that's in the cop plan that's not specifically outlined in the code. And the code doesn't talk about what an overloaded street is, but again, the plan says it discourages development that overload streets. And while the plan for SRR zones allows greater freedom and flexibility, it does not encourage development likely to have a negative impact on neighborhood livability, including traffic flow. I think we're back to that same, call it an impasse, where we think we should be able to utilize a cop plan to our to suit what we feel is appropriate as commissioners. But it sounds like our hands are kind of tied. Walt, you want to comment on that?
Actually, just for the record, staff reviewed this, meaning kind of the city staff, and it is our intention that a traffic impact analysis will be required going forward. In other words, at this juncture, conceptually does this layout layout work, but it doesn't talk about traffic counts, et cetera. However, when you start getting into the weeds and looking at design review, then it talks about points of access, traffic management, et cetera. So it is certainly our intention, beginning with phase one and going throughout, that they look at a traffic impact analysis has to be from a professional engineer that does these sort of things. And that may require modification to the layout. So I hope that helps out a little bit.
Well, it does, and I was just about to get to that. I was going to ask Vito if he had thought of doing a traffic impact study, so I'm glad that staff has and because I I think regardless of what this development looks like, the fact that it's all short-term use, interim use, it's probably going to result in several trips a day to and from each rental unit. The guests, the cleaners, maintenance personnel, supply, delivery, management, staff. So it's a lot different than having a bunch of single-family residential's in that on that property. So I would, Vito, is that, is that something you're able to follow through on?
Yeah, that is something I talked to the to the city and and public works about the the traffic study. And I think a general note, like I I agree, the traffic flow and similar like the the classic street cottages and the the new the new Highlands. I I do think the proximity and location to downtown being a block away from Lenita and a few blocks, you know, six to eight blocks away from the beach. I I do think, of course, the traffic study is necessary to assess and analyze the the flow to and from the site, but I do hope and think that this this site and development would would leave a lot of vehicles on site with bike parking and the walkability to downtown. I think in the in the peak season, most people would would be parked and and keep their cars on site and then walk to the coffee shops and beach that would be more difficult to even find a parking place closer on the main street. So, one, yes, a traffic study, but two, I think that with its proximity to the main attractions of Manzanita, that it would be more limited than if it was in a different location in respect to Lenita and and the beach.
Does your concept of that driveway have space to utilize a walking path or a bicycle safe?
It would be, yeah, both walking pack and bicycles provided on the on the property as well, bicycle parking.
No, I was I was talking about access ingress and egress by.
Yeah, so there'd be a a walking path up up the driveway and then out to the corner of Dorcas.
You just made me smile. Does anyone else on the commission have any questions for either staff or for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, are there any persons in the audience who wish to make a comment or ask a question of either staff or of the applicant?
I have three hands raised, Lee. I'm gonna let Troy Bowers unmute himself.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. Again, I'm at six oh five Ridge Road. It's the property immediately east of the fifth tee box. We have a nice view shed down the fifth fairway to the green. And I'm I'm assuming that something will be developed here. And therefore, I'm not going to oppose the development. I appreciate the good work that all of you are doing to take a look at this in a quality way and review it. My comments really have to do with the protection of quality of life and property values. And with respect to quality of life, the the view shed's important. I think the protection of the trees along the golf course and the maintain maintenance of those is important. It sounds like those will be maintained from what I hear from Vito tonight. Think that the downcast lights are perfect in helping us protect our dark skies. And the architecture seems to be of good quality, not necessarily my style, but good quality nonetheless. Noise is a concern for us, being where we are up above these sites. We're a bit spoiled in that nobody's been there for the past however long we've been there and before that. So quiet, maintaining quiet hours and maintaining dog discipline and that type of thing will be important. I know that probably doesn't fall into your purview, but hopefully the city and the property owner can help us manage that moving forward. And then the other concern for quality of life just is with fires and kind of putting some sideboards on the number of fire pits and that type of thing is that smoke rises and with us being up above it, the ability to leave our windows open at night to cool off at the coast has been a wonderful thing. And so keeping the smoke at a reasonable level and then just making sure that things are in a maintained in a way that we don't get fires getting loose and spreading up the hill and getting to us. And then with respect to property values, you know, just quality construction, good architecture, maintenance of the facilities once they're built. And then one of the things that wasn't addressed, Vito, is at the south end of the the properties right now, there's a a waste area that Properties right now, there's a a waste area that's being used to dump spoils and I'm curious as to how that's going to be addressed. Kind of pretty that up, um, so it's not left as a uh, eyesore. And I'm I'm confident that our codes will help us address hard issues. And I thank you for letting me articulate uh, just what our concerns are and appreciate your, all of your good work and thoughts regarding that. I do have one quick ask in the future, I kind of had to piece the maps together a little bit to figure out. Where this was happening relative to where our houses were at the south end of the property, we're within two hundred and fifty feet, but. Um, this, what's being shown on the screen right now. Was helpful, but getting where the buildings laid out, where the mini cabins were and that type of thing, but. Took took a little bit of work just because this one's oriented north-south and the other exhibits were more oriented east-west, so. Um, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Who's next, Scott?
I have got Mark Adarich, uh, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, uh, no real concerns, I mean, I'm very familiar with how these pieces of property get developed. Um, main question is, uh, obviously contingent upon approval here, what's, what's timing? Uh, as far as construction, you know, uh, and things moving forward and then. Two-pronged question, uh, what is management as far as logistics of of these properties? I know it's listed as a hotel, but is it more of uh, Airbnb management type of style with the, with cleaning and maintenance? And and overarching uh, management of the property? And sorry, that's directed towards towards Vito.
Um, yeah, the the management, it would be a hybrid approach, so there would be a staff available for assistance and to monitor. The previous question about, you know, noise or ordinances and making sure that the property is is, you know, being used. Uh, to to meet the standards of Manzanita. Um, it would, it would be a model that has more of a a keyless entry, kind of a more progressive. Um, route similar to what I've done in Arch Cape where it has um, keyless entries and a little bit less um. Interface between staff and and uh, and guests.
Okay, next we have Joe, and Joe, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is uh, Joe Newhouse. I have uh, kind of a multi-pronged question. As far as I can tell, this will be the only hotel in the S R R zone. And part of the units will be in the R three zone. My first question is. Which part of it will be in the R three zone?
Um, I could let Walt follow up, but the entire property is is zone S R R, and I think the comment was. Per the P U D, the requirements, we have to follow the R three zoning, but I'll let maybe Walt follow up if need be.
That is uh, absolutely correct, the entire parcel, both, both parcels are zone S R R. But based on the code, the underlying standards of development setbacks, building height, et cetera. Uh, must comply with the R three zone.
Okay, the reason that I ask is that the same ordinance that allows a hotel in the S R R zone. Also talks and regulates the uh, short-term rentals and the seventeen and a half percent cap. So while the other hotels are in a commercial zone or R four, which are not under the seventeen and a half percent. The S R R zone is, so the cottages um, and the uh, hotel. I can't remember what you call them, the, the, the little cottages and the hotel cottages. Are, to me, cottages, not a hotel. And if that's the case, they should be regulated by the seventeen and a half percent. Cap that applies to those, to that zone. And I'm wondering how the members of the planning commission are going to do both. Uh, it's both in the same ordinance.
Well, Joe, I don't have an answer for you on that right offhand, um.
Can I speak to that, Lee, really quickly, just because I've had some pre-app meetings as well? Um, based on my review with the city managers and planners, the, so the entire property. Is S R R and outright uses the hotel motel and the entire intent of the pro. The, the property as a hotel, so the units on the north would be. More stacked, they're two stories, not in the case of this unit that is three, and then with a series of hotel cabins that. It have, offer a variety of stay, so. I, I believe in my interpretation of the code is if, if this was a, a planned unit development to convert these to individual tax lots. That are for residential use, then they would fall under that seventeen percent cap and and fall under the fabric of. The short-term rental of Manzanita. But the, the plan and and application is to have the entire property owned and operated by. One single user and giving them, giving guests a variety of, of room types, so this is. One example at the north and then cabins similar to this throughout the middle and south, where this is an example of a. A hotel in some other part of the country, but um, so the, the whole property would be owned and operated as a hotel.
Okay, next we have Denise Lockman, and you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, um, thank you. I uh, I just wanted to make um, a couple of general comments. Um, I, I wanted to start with, I know this, it's become more clear to me of listening to the meeting that this is more about just the layout. Um, of what this development would look like, but I, I really want to start with the fact. That that this proposal actually is quite a large one, um, you know, with thirty-five units and. Um, and the gathering space with amenities, and so I thought, well, I I want to know like. What's the general size of hotels and motels in Manzanita? So what I did was I went to the Explore Manzanita website, I went to the lodging page. And I looked up all of the motels and hotels in town, and then I went to each of their websites to see if, how many units, if I could figure out how many units they had. And what I found is that the vast majority of them have somewhere between eight to thirteen, maybe fifteen units. Um, in, in most of them, so they're, they're much smaller. The, the last time that a hotel of this size was built in Manzanita was the Sunset Surf Motel. Um, and those buildings, the two buildings were, one was built in eighty nineteen eighty-two, and the other one was built in nineteen eighty-five. Each of those buildings has twenty, twenty rooms each, so there, it's a forty-unit hotel. Um, it makes a lot of sense where it's placed, right? It's right, it's right on the ocean front. Um, visitor, there's been lots of visitor, visitor lodging in Manzanita along the, along the ocean front. This project um, is going to be the largest hotel motel. Um, regardless, regardless of what the layout or structure of it looks like, that's going to be built in the city in forty years. And it's being placed in the middle of a, of a resi- of residential neighborhoods. Um, and there's, and I, I'm really grateful for the commissioners speaking to the broader livability issues. Um, I and 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 uh, other family members who live on Dorcas have a lot of concerns about this. Um, and so then the other piece that I'm just gonna touch, I was gonna talk about wetlands, but I think that's gonna get covered. But traffic, I took a look at the two thousand three downtown transportation plan, Classic Street is a connector. Um, the city has done, well, I would say some substantial work on Classic since it was a. Little gravel, heavily potholed street, um. But the, I, the other, the other thing I want to say to the commission is that, you know, this, this section of Manzanita. Is the, is the part of town that has had the, the most development in the last eight years. Like, let's just run down, right? Classic Street cottages, thirty units, Mulligan Drive, somewhere around ten to twelve units. The Highlands in the next ten years, there's going to be hundreds of units. And, you know, so this section of town is getting hit really hard with a lot of development right now, because it's where the land is. And now we're gonna add, you know, the largest hotel motel in forty years here, too. Um, and so I just, I would ask, maybe we just slow down a little bit and take a breath. And um, the conversation has really helped me today, so I want to say thank you for that. Um, and also for the opportunity for this planning process to be um, an engaged one and a robust one. Um, a lot of my neighbors are not here today, but I've been hearing from lots of them, there is a lot of concern. Uh, we live literally across the street from where the entrance to this um, facility is going to be. Um, and the four-way stop sign there is already problematic. Um, I have concerns about cars trying to go in and out of this facility really close to that stop sign. Um, the, the transportation plan asks for a north and south turn lanes. At Lanita and Classic, um, I talked to the city manager today, I know none of this is the developer's responsibility. I know the city has challenges with funding, but. All of these developments right now are having major livability issues on the people who live here year-round. And so I'm just asking for um, kind of some consideration of that. And also that the planning process, which really is to engage the public, is, is really used and that. Um, we're able to have a robust discussion around this, and so thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Anybody else, uh, Scott?
Oh, yes, I got, I have more hands up there, Lee. Uh, next is Mary Reeve, you can unmute yourself.
Hey, um, I have a question, well, a couple of questions for Vito, actually. What is considered the back of the property? You keep talking about the back, is that the east or the west side of the property?
I would consider the back in this case, just with north up on my plan, so the back being down at the, the set, like the south end of the property. So down here at the end of the drive is what I'm calling the back, so actually south.
Okay, so you're looking at it north-south.
I'm thinking of it as the entry, like the entry point, the point of entry.
Right, I'm talking about, like, when you were talking about the recreational areas, I'm thinking east-west, so. Are the recreational areas that you're planning at this time? Um, on the Classic Street side of your development or on the golf course side?
They, they would be on the golf course side, so one would be located here in the middle of the property. And then one would be located at the end of the property, at the, at the, sorry, at the south side of the property, south and west side of the property.
That makes me happy, thank you. And my other question is regarding traffic, I have a, uh, really have a problem with that. Extra traffic coming in and out of there. Is there no way that you can make the entrance to your property on the south?
No.
Doesn't work, huh?
I can't, um, I met with the city a number of times while coming off of Classic, which doesn't sound like the adequate approach for initial plan studies. It was, it was guided and determined that the, the, just west of the intersection, the four-way stop signs at. Dorcas and Classic would be the point of entry, and then it's a little bit hard, I can zoom in here, but the topography does not allow. Um, access at the end of the property, the south end of the property to, to circle back up to. Classic Street, similar to what the uh, Classic Street cottages have done with the one-way drive aisle, it just, it's too. Steep of a, it sits, you know, twenty, thirty feet below the roadway.
Okay, thank you, and then.
Sorry, Mary, you can uh, re-un, re-unmute yourself if you had something to follow up on.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, uh, we have Gerald, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, yeah, I would like to applaud Vito for bringing an answer. To the city of Manzanita for part of our S T R problem. And part of that S T R problem is the city consistently tells us they're afraid of the T L T tax that they will lose. If we reduce the S T Rs, well, putting hotels are how. Our neighboring cities solve that problem. Because hotels bring in T L T, too. Your transient lodging tax comes from hotels, motels, and we can increase and maybe. Even do better with a hotel here with the tax rates. On the other side, that might allow us to reduce our number of S T Rs. Being a resident that lives in an area that's almost forty percent. Yeah, the, the cap doesn't really exist in Manzana, there is no seventeen point five, right in my neighborhood, we're at forty percent. And it's not very livable, and we need to do something about it. I have a second question, and this question has a point, and this has to do with. The classic road was a big uh, concern. When the Highlands was being put in, and it had to do with the quality of that road. Are we making it worse by allowing this to happen? Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald, and us, just for other people who might want to speak, I want to remind you that. If you want to bring up something that's already been raised, uh, just go on record as concurring with some previous speaker. Um, we don't need to go over some of the same issues that have already been discussed. Go ahead, Scott.
All right, next we have Bill Gumpenberger, uh, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thanks, Scott. My question is regarding the fire. You got, if, if a fire was to break out down there, you've got one entrance in and one way to get out. That's a big concern to me. I've been in other developments where that was not allowed, not here, not on the coast, but in the city. And I would like to see something back from state or fire or somebody. That says that that's allowed, so that that it is an allowed situation. And Walt and Lee, possibly for you, if I understand what you're saying is that the residential code for R three construction. Setbacks, height, yard size and everything else will be followed for this project, is that absolutely correct?
To be clear, it's not, it's not, not a code, but yes, no.
But those, those rules would be followed? In the, in the zoning rules of Manzanita?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And and Walt, I'm gonna ask you just to, to help with clarification, I believe that the report. Um, from city staff included something from the Halen Bay Fire and Rescue. Saying that they concurred with the layout of the development, both for. Um, fire access and for egress as well, is that right?
That is my understanding, yes.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause here for a minute and ask Dan White soul to. Uh, respond to the question about Classic. Dan, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here. So what was the, the question on Classic?
That when the Highlands was being developed, there was um, a lot of consideration. And questions raised about the. Um, about the use of Classic and the capability of the, of the road withstanding the additional pressure. So the question had to do with this development, is that just going to continue to increase? Um, the standards of that, of that road.
Um, that honestly, I couldn't tell you, that'd be what the traffic study would, would suggest.
Okay, okay, um, great, tha- thank you, Dan. Somebody else, Scott?
I do, Eric Hanson, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Uh, yeah, thank you, um, first off, I wanted to thank a lot of the community members who have already made comments, um. In particular, uh, Denise, I don't think we've met, but uh, I hope we do, or it sounds like we're a couple houses apart, um. So, and also I, I echo the concerns about the state of Classic Street. I live right on Classic Street and as someone who walks and runs on Classic Street on a regular basis, I've already. Seen over the past few years that it's gotten more and more crowded, and I hope something can be done about that. But uh, specifically to uh, this. But specifically to this, this proposed development, I have two concerns or two questions. Either aimed at the commission or Vito. First, I've seen mixed language about this, this community building. I've seen some language calling it a community building, some language calling it a restaurant. I don't know what is accurate or what's what the plan is for that. And secondly, lighting regulations. I appreciate the fact that Vito specifically called out downward facing lighting and also specifically called out Coast cabins as something that seems like maybe a bit of an inspiration or something he's modeling this after, because I think that place is pretty beautiful. But like, it, it's one thing for a developer to say that they're going to promise downward lighting, but it's another thing to, I'm just concerned like what sort of regulations are there to make sure light pollution doesn't become a problem? So hopefully that's, those are two clear questions.
Well, there was a recent change in the zoning ordinance for outdoor lighting. I would welcome you to look at it and entertain yourself with, with what it says, but basically the general concept is that all lights have to face down, not, not project out and no bear bulbs, et cetera. So while the enforcement end of that is going to take a long time to enact and to be as prescriptive as it might be. We're, we're in, we're taking baby steps right now to figure out how to, how to do that. The rules are there, but implementing them is another, is another study. But clearly any new construction, commercial particularly, has to live up to those standards. So those would be inspected at the time and all lighting, exterior lighting would be facing downward and not allowed to project up.
Okay, Lee, it looks like I have one more hand up, and that'd be Yvanna, and you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yeah, hi. Um, I'm also a resident of Manzanita and live in the Classic Street cottages. And I know a bunch of us have gotten together and are just concerned just because we enjoy the beauty, the trees, the elk come through that area. It's an elk corridor. If you don't know that, Vito, I'm sure the people will soon find out. And first of all, I just thank you for leaving the trees because I think that has been such a big concern of the homeowners is we love that bank of trees that stand there. And I just want to also concur what Denise has said, where I'm very concerned about the livability. I just think that access onto Dorcas, boy, there's going to be a car accident there in no time. Because people have already come up Jackson Way thinking that's the road to the park, and I'm sure that's going to happen once that street down there gets developed. But anyway, I just want to go on record as saying, I just, I just, I'm in fear of the livability of this area. I, it's just sad. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvanna.
Lee, it looks like we have another hand up now. Ben Rosenberger. And Ben, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Except it's Kim, his lovely wife. I'm just, I, I want to just concur with Denise and Yvanna. I think a lot of us are just feeling really nervous about the amount of growth that, that we're facing. I live down on Third Street and I'm right now looking at eight giant Monopoly-style hotel houses, which will be finished soon. And it, it just breaks my heart that we're losing so much of our canopy. I'm really grateful that Vito's leaving trees. I think we need to encourage all the people who come to develop in our city to leave as many trees as they can when they plan their developments and their, their homes. Thank you for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. No more hands?
Oh, Janet Carter has just raised her hand, Lee.
Okay.
Janet, you should be able to unmute.
Hello. Thank you, everybody, for all of this information. Could we go back to Eric Hansen's question about the restaurant, which didn't get answered?
Vito?
So, yeah, so there's the series of, of hotel, different types of hotel units, and then the bottom would be an amenity for the guests. So there'd be a common area that would be situated between the, the, the north units and the south, the middle section of the south. So this would be a community gathering place that would have a kitchenette, outside fireplaces and barbecues for guests that flank the common area that I, that I mentioned before in the conversation.
Where's the restaurant?
Oh, it's no restaurant. So it'd just be a, a gathering place with a patio, the common green space with a kitchen and barbecues out on the patio for, for common recreation.
Okay.
Not a third-party restaurant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else, Scott?
It looks like that is everybody, Lee.
Okay. So I do want to mention that we received three different letters from folks. And as it turns out, all of them spoke tonight except one. James Miller, who had some concerns about the wetland and based on Vito's comments that he's going to follow up and get that sorted out. So at this time, I'm going to close the public testimony. And I want to remind the commission that we're only considering the planned unit development, not the amenities inside at this point. I'm going to invite discussion by the commission. And we can ask questions of the applicant, audience members or staff. But we're not at the point where the discussion will be limited to just us. So, anyone like to go first? I think you all want to go eat dinner. But it is time to formulate some kind of an emotion, some kind of an emotion. So we need some discussion before we go there.
Now, let me throw this out, Lee, on the, the wetlands. That's something that we need an answer to. So at this point, I'm wondering whether it would be wise to pause until we get that answer before we proceed or whether we can make that a condition of our proceeding, of our decision on this.
Yeah, I think, I think there's two ways to go there. We can either continue, continue the hearing to a later date, or we can put that as a condition of approval, should we elect to approve the PUD. Either way is fine. All right. Anyone else?
I would like to, Lee, require that the applicant delineate on the map where the common areas and open use or recreation areas are in the development. And list them individually and the number of square feet in each one of them. But show them on the map and label them.
Okay, so you want to, not just a poll, you want, you want the individual square footages of each one of the
I think, I think, I think you mentioned two or most three different ones, and I don't think that would be a big burden to get on the map and listed in his description of the property.
Oh, Vito, you can do that, right?
I could do that. I just want to, you know, I mean, I'm happy and I, I think I've tried to embed this into the landscape as much as I, I, I can. I just, you know, I'll list it, but it's not really tracking or following back to any zoning code or breakdown of requirements, but I'm happy to list where those locations are that I notated. I just don't know how that relates to the percentages and breakdown of
Well, it
coverage.
What it relates to is what the next round of plans look like, and whatever you put in this one as far as open space, I would expect that to be carried through to, you know, future.
Noted. Yep, that makes, that makes perfect sense. Yep. I can add that to in the shading and diagrams located like on this site.
Okay. Uh, I don't know who was next. Steve, Jenna? Who was?
Uh, I am wondering, can we add the, just to have it in writing, the traffic impact analysis into a condition?
Absolutely.
Uh, yeah, I concur with John about the wetlands. There's so many, so many unanswered questions, especially the traffic. Because that seemed to be the biggest issue for the neighborhood with that, all the traffic coming in and out. And regardless of how close they are to downtown, people are still going to be driving their cars. There'll be a lot of traffic going in and out, especially in the summer months. So I would like to have that traffic analysis report and the wetlands settled before we vote on this. I would concur on deferring this until those questions are answered.
Okay. Jen, is your hand back up or you just didn't put it down? Walt?
Um, a couple of things here. Bert was talking about having some sort of delineation of these shared recreational areas. I think the only way that the planning commission could review that is if you see a modified set of plans. Otherwise, this is being done after your decision, which is probably not appropriate. You want to see what you're approving. And based on that, and also the issues of the wetland, just to sort of bolt down some of the conditions of approval, I would certainly recommend at this time that the planning commission continue this hearing to, or to the, to the next meeting. Have staff return with, the applicant return with the modified layout and staff return with the new set, a modified staff report with a new set of conditions addressing some of the issues here. It may also be helpful if the applicant can provide additional information on wetlands or the traffic analysis of some sort. So I, 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 I think what I hear everyone saying is that they know where they want to go, but they want to see it first.
Thank you, Walt. Any other, any other discussion from the commissioners? I want to say that I think that's a fair summation by Walt. I think he hit all the key points. Okay, would anyone, would anyone care to make a motion?
Can I make a statement about that before or no? Is it not the right time?
Vito?
Yeah, am I allowed to make a statement?
Um, sure.
Um, I definitely agree with getting the, the wetlands delineation. I'd just like to note that the traffic study is, is highly involved. You know, I have a civil engineer tied to the project and that is more of an item based on all of my projects across many jurisdictions is tied more to the final permit documents with relate, with relationship to the final unit counts and parking and grading of the site and review of the stop sign. So it would be very difficult at this time to get the thorough traffic study at this stage of the project. I definitely see it being part of the conditions of a final permit with the city of Manzanita, but at this stage it would be very difficult for a traffic study to be performed with the level of detail of this project.
Well, your point is taken. I'm, I'm a little concerned based on testimony tonight and concerns from the neighboring community that traffic is, is certainly a large issue here. And to avoid it, I know you don't, I know you're not avoiding it, but to put it off that far, we, we might, let's say that we approve your planned unit development with a condition that you get the study. And then you get the study and the study says, no, we, we're not going to approve it now. That puts us kind of behind the eight ball, so to speak. So time, I get it. It's a huge issue. You might be looking at, I'm going to guess six to eight months before you could come back with something from a civil engineer? Does that, does that seem possible? I'm not asking you to put that long at this point. I'm just, I just want you to clarify what you feel getting that study is going to take time-wise.
I mean, I'll have to review my civil engineer and verify it. The wetlands 100% feels very easy to return within the next week or next meeting. The traffic study feels like it could be, you know, if, if approved, a condition of approval based on layout. And then if, if not, it would be a modification. It just, it's a lot of, you know, it's, I agree, I see it both sides. It just seems like it was more tied to a permit document versus an initial PUD.
I, I agree. I just don't want, I just don't want the commission to give you a condition of approval and then find out later that that's not going to work for you. So.
Okay, that makes, and can, does the city have a, an outline or code that, that drives what the, what requires a traffic study currently that they could send over to me? So I know like when it triggers and, and what they would need to perform?
No, there isn't. As was, as, as Walt mentioned earlier, there really aren't a lot of traffic considerations, especially on private property.
So the request would be without, I mean, there's no code driving the, the request this time?
There is no code driving the request. We have, however, a lot of citizen input with those concerns. This is something staff has reviewed, saying that, you know, we understand the conceptual nature of this project. By the same token, there will be a need to eventually look at traffic. Probably the intersection may be the biggest issue and what sort of improvements may be required. Don't want to kick the can down the road too much. I would offer two, two suggestions here. Place the TIA as a condition and just recognize that the applicant takes the risk. If the TIA says, you know, you are overloading the site, you're going to generate too many cars or vehicle, you know, trucks or whatever, the applicant may have to go back to the drawing board and sort of review how the layout proceeds. So that's something that the risk is really on the applicant. The second choice is to continue it even further to like May or so, but I, I, I don't want to just drag this thing out. I think, I think if a TIA comes back for phase one and says it's not going to work, then the applicant has to start over.
Thank you, Walt. I'm going to, I see their city manager is looking like she wanted to weigh in a moment ago. Do you have anything to add to that, Leila?
Uh, no, my comment was more related to Vito's request for a scope. So as noted, we don't have anything in our code, Vito. So what I would suggest is you have your engineer draft a scope and we can review that and see if that hits the mark.
Uh, well, that's pretty vague, Vito. I, I think that I think that folks can be available to talk to your engineer. And the engineer can say, this is what I plan on doing. Is that going to meet muster with you folks? And I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, because we'll want to discuss kind of the extent of the analysis. I mean, obviously we want to know what the general traffic counts are, probably intersection impacts, Dorcas and Classic, and then, you know, whatever the first intersection is, it probably interacts with 101 would be a minimum. So staff can work with you to identify a reasonable scope that addresses the concerns that have been raised.
So, just to be clear, so that could potentially be a two-step process, so an initial like review of, of intent, and then the follow-up would be the full traffic analysis by an engine or like the, the final document submitted as a second phase with?
Yeah, that's been my experience elsewhere as we draft a scope collaboratively with the um, then it's just more efficient for you as opposed to doing the whole study and then coming back to us and we want to change. So we try to get that upfront.
Does that workable, Vito? Is that workable, Vito?
Um, it's workable. It's a little bit unclear just with, you know, not having it tracked back to any, any zoning requirements, but yes, it makes, it makes sense what you're requesting.
Okay.
I would hope that the traffic study doesn't delay this, this project's middle, you know, too many months due to it. Where it could be potentially a condition of approval.
Well, do I, do I have any, would anyone care to make a motion?
Uh, can I ask one more question of Lila? What kind of timeframe are you looking at on that traffic study?
That's not up to me. That's up to their consultant team. Typically depends. I mean, it depends on how busy their consultant is, but and how big the study is, but it could be a few weeks to a couple of months.
All right. So again, anyone care to make a motion? Well, here are some things that we here are some things that were raised. And to answer your question a moment ago, Vito, personally, I would be comfortable with with some conditions related to the traffic impact study that still would allow you to proceed, i.e. with a approved with conditions on the, on the PUD. But I think Walt made a really good point a moment ago that, you know, it's on you. If this thing doesn't work for some reason, it's, it's on you. So with that, I'm going to, again, anybody, anybody care to make a motion? Get this thing rolling one way or another? Okay. Well, we've got
What kind of motion are you looking for at this point? Just one related to the traffic study?
No, I'm looking for a motion to either approve, approve with modifications, not to accept or a continuance. And I think it's fair that Vito pointed out that if we do a continuance and require the traffic study to be complete, that could take months, if not a year or more. So depending upon how you feel about the planned unit development itself, that might fall out of the realm of acceptable. So we've got, we've got four opportunities here to make a decision.
Could I make a suggestion, Lee?
Sure.
I would suggest the following motion to continue the hearing until April 18th at 4:00 PM, requesting the applicant return with a modified layout or additional information regarding the site's recreational amenities, revising the staff report to include clarification of the restaurant and also conditions with regard to the wetland and also the traffic impact analysis.
Okay. I like the sound of that with the exception of pinning him down on the traffic impact and now, impact analysis for a complete report. I mean, I don't, he's not going to have that for months.
Right, but the condition would be that he would have to, just to clarify that the TIA would be required by the first phase.
Okay.
Because right now we've just had a general discussion. This thing would bolt it down.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody care to play off of what Walt just described?
Well, I'll give it a try here.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we continue the hearing until April 18th in order to get more information on the wetlands issue to get the modified recreational map and to get clarification on the traffic impact to the degree it's available at that point.
Okay, we have a motion. I would entertain.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? I'm
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Well, you know, you have a decision. It might not be exactly, exactly what you want. Certainly agreeing to structurally to the PUD. I take that back. We're not, we're setting for 18th. So my apologies. That was, that was an error. And I need to make sure that staff is available for a hearing on April 18th. Somebody's nodding, so I guess we're good.
Uh, is that Easter Monday?
You think it is?
So would it be Tuesday instead?
Does the city have Easter Monday off?
I don't think we do.
We do not. We're here.
Yeah. Good call, Jenna. So, uh, okay, we'll set the hearing over to April 18. We have a, we have a decision for that set over and does anyone have any other questions, any issues they'd like to raise regarding this proposal? Okay. With that, I'm going to entertain a motion to close this meeting. Motion to adjourn? Anyone?
I'll make a motion to be adjourned.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right, here we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Lee. Good job, Lee.
Probably. Walt, thank you for your continued input and to the, to our benefit.
Thanks, Walt.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good night, everyone. Have a good evening.
Everyone.
Good night.